Everyone ready? Very good. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven o'clock on Monday, January eighth. I'm gonna take roll call. Counselor Schinkin?
Here.
Counselor Hopper?
Here.
Counselor Gardner?
Present.
Counselor Nellens?
Present.
Counselor Peterson?
Present.
Welcome everyone to our first meeting of this new council. If we can all rise, we'll do a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, in the highest of all, with the procedure and justice for all.
Very good. Our next order of business is the formation of the town council. The first one is we need to get a president of the council, so I need a nomination, please.
Clerk Treasurer Miss, I'd like to make a motion to nominate David Nellens as president of the town council twenty twenty four.
My second.
Very good. Mr. Nellens, Counselor Nellens, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Present.
Yes or no, please?
Present. I vote present.
And Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Nellens, who will be the president. The next order of business is a vice president. Do I have a nomination, a motion for a nomination for vice president?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate George Schinkin as vice president.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Very good. Counselor Schinkin, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Thank you. By vote, Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Very good. This is the end of my time leaving this meeting. I now relinquish the mantle to our council president, Mr. Nellens.
Thank you very much. Council here, I appreciate your vote of confidence and support, and I appreciate all the residents that are out here in the audience, friends, residents that are present, and appreciate staff getting everything ready. And with that, Wendy, the next order would be the public comment.
We need to, we need a secretary for today's meeting for the next four years.
Yes, yes. Alrighty, is this an appointment that I make?
I think we again do a motion except and.
Alright, so looking for a motion for the secretary for the town council?
Mr. President, I would make a nomination, I would nominate Wendy Miss to be our secretary, and I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Wendy, would you accept that you voted?
I, I do accept, and now I will do the vote, the vote. Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Would you like to continue, or would you like to do that at the end of the, of the meeting? The portfolio assignments and appointments, that's what's?
Yes, that's what's there.
Generally next, yes.
Alright, um, let's do them now. Let's, let's get this set up, so.
Very good.
The appointments and portfolio assignments, we start off with nerve seat, and I'm appointing Wendy Miss to continue attending that. The redevelopment commission.
Mr. President, this is a point order. Is that nerve seat appointment, is that an appointment, or is that a vote?
I believe it's an appointment.
Is it? Okay, remember the last time we had a vote, four years ago.
We did have a vote.
Yes.
Let's do that then.
Let's do that.
Motion if we can have.
So we'll need a motion. I make motion that we elect Wendy Miss for nerve seat. Second, we have a second.
My second.
Thank you. Thank you. I accepted that, and any comments? Then we'll go with a vote. Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the next one is an appointment. You appoint three council, you appoint three to the redevelopment commission.
So as my three appointments, I would like to appoint George Schinkin, Joe Hopper, and Chuck Gardner. And then the council, do we have two?
I don't think that that, I think that's a presidential appointment. I don't know that it needs a motion, but the next one, where the council nominates two members to redevelopment commission, that does need to be.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that Dave Nellens and Jonathan Peterson fill out or complete the final two spots in the redevelopment commission.
My second that.
Please follow along.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
And then just for note, the school board appointment is Mr. John Castro, and I expect that to continue going forward. Oh, there he is. Hi, Chuck. There he is. Very good. Later in the meeting, we will swear in five of you in to the redevelopment commission before this meeting ends.
Alright, thank you. Then we have reappointment to boards and commissions, and it says a blanket motion and vote, so that would be at the end.
Yes.
Correct. Alright, for the.
Okay, so it's a blanket, we'll make a motion in the discussion? Okay.
Alright, so for the board of safety, I would like to appoint Jerry Bappa and reappoint Linda Dunn. And as the counselor liaison, I'd like to name George Schinkin. On the plan commission, I would like to name Rachel Branigan. I'd like to name, and name Jennifer Johns, and the counselors would be Jonathan Peterson, Joseph Hopper, and George Schinkin. For the BZA, I would like to, to name Jennifer Johns, Ed Falowski, and Jonathan Peterson will be the liaison for that board.
Mr. President, point of, point of order, I think. The position you're proposing, Ms. Johns to replace, it's a planning commission appointment to the BZA, perhaps Mr. West could bring in on that?
No, I, there is a plan commission appointment, but it is not Ms. Johns. There's, right now, it was, it's been, Mr. Raffin has been. There's two appointments, one from the council, from the plan commission onto the BZA, and one from within the plan commission to the BZA. So.
I think that's correct. I know that statute is correct. I'm just not, I don't have the sheet in front of me, so I don't know who's in which slot.
That was the internal, and so.
Okay.
She's replacing.
On the park board, I would like to have Robin Paulson for another term. And the town council liaison would be David Nellens. The RDA steering committee, I'd like to name Chuck Gardner for that. And then Lake County Solid Waste, I'd like to name Dave Nellens, Chuck Gardner, and then alternates would be Jonathan Peterson, Joseph Hopper, and George Schinkin. And then on the flip side.
This is where we would do, I believe, a vote. Yes, we would like to make, someone would make a motion to do a second, any discussion, then we'll do a discussion, then we'll do a voice vote.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the boards and commissions as presented.
My second that.
Discussion? Mr. President, I would ask, how do these new people get, or did, did we contact the existing people that have been, are being replaced at all, if their term was not going to be filled or reappointed?
I believe that that has not happened. I did contact a couple of them, Robin Paulson, to validate that, and I did hear about Rachel Branigan. And I have spoken with Jennifer Johns. Part of the yes, so to answer your question, no and yes.
There's at least one person on this list that, when they filled out applications, did not put down the board that that person's going to be appointed for? Has that person been asked if he wants to serve on that board? Yes. Or BZA?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Has there been any interviews with other members of the public that filled out applications? We all received applications, I think on December fourth.
Yes.
Did we talk to any, interviewed any other residents for any of these other positions? So I can get in, most of them weren't the positions that we were applying for, so most of them were for our board. As you could see, we were gonna reappoint Robin Paulson, so that was most of your applications. And one was for, for the safety, and that person happened not to be the, the correct political balance, political balance that we were looking for.
The boards that are politically balanced, I will confirm that they are the party that they are supposed to be, and then if there's a problem, we'll come back in the next regularly scheduled meeting, which I think is February fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Gardner, anything else?
No further questions.
Any other questions from the counselors? Alright then, would you call for, I'll call for the vote?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Alright, that takes us up to staff that we're going to confirm. The first one is Director of Parks, Parks and Recreation, Mark Heinz. We're gonna do this in one group, or?
That one is just an announcement, and then we were going to, you need to vote on the next four.
And do we wanna do that as?
Can, can we do that as one, Mr. Westland? We're voting to confirm the police chief, the fire chief, the town attorney, the town attorney for general town matters, and the town attorney for the park, uh, park management mission in the BZ.
It's the pleasure of the council. If they wanna do it together, that's fine. If somebody wants to take them individually, that's also fine.
Well, let's do it individually. We made that decision.
Okay, I make a motion to retain Police Chief Stephen Shekko. Seconded motion?
Discussion?
Any discussion? Take the vote, please.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to retain Fire Chief Mark Hyduk. I'll second that motion.
Have any discussion? Questions? Could you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
And then with town attorney, I'll make a motion to retain David Westland for our town attorney.
I second that.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I would have is if we should add a dollar amount to that, because he'll be, once this is over with, we'll have to approve this again with a dollar amount. I think currently, he's at two hundred and five dollars per hour. I would reckon, I will, again, we can either do it now, or we, he'll love to do this at the next meeting, have to bring a, you know, a contract with, with that. We want to discuss that at this time, or we won't wait till the next meeting to do that. I think we're just appointing right now. We could do the contract next meeting. Go ahead and let her engage with the activating. Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Any other questions, comments? We'll call for the vote.
Counselor Scoo, oh, Scoo, I'm reading an S. Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
I'm sorry, this, this is for appointment of the town attorney?
Yes, it is, Mr. Westland.
I vote present.
And then Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we'll reappoint David Wicklund for the town attorney for the plant commission BZA in the plant, uh, park board. Now, he hasn't.
Discussion? On that, I'd like to note so everyone's aware, this is a transitional appointment for a period of two months to three months maximum. Which time, I'm gonna say, which time we're looking at Westland and Bennett, we take that overall.
Mr. President, have we talked to Mr. Wicklund about this?
Yes, he has been talked to.
So you're asking me to change my motion?
Well, I wanted to make sure that was on there, because that's.
Oh, but that's not my motion.
I understand. So yes, we need to have your motion reflect the action.
Mr. Wicklund has been spoken to about this?
Yes.
Okay, I, I will amend my motion to reflect the comments that this is a temporary appointment for David Wicklund, and he has been notified of that.
Yes. Do we have a second?
My second.
Further discussion? I'll vote.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Mr. President, aren't we doing anything with the town manager? Do we appoint, reappoint him starting this year? Because I would make the motion to reappoint the Tom Andrew, Dustin Anderson, to his position.
At this point, I had not listed that as an action. Correct.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we reappoint Tom Andrew, Dustin Anderson, to his position.
Do we have a second on that motion? Do we have a second for that motion? I'll ask one more time, is there a second for that motion? Seeing no second, the motion, I guess we call it dice for lack of support. The redevelopment, we will handle that in the next meeting?
Nope, we want to swear you in before the next meeting, please. We've all been, we've all been appointed, it's the next, it's the next stage, so, yes, please, if we can all stand, and then I do have something to sign, best down, sign it, bring it on back. Alright, I state your name and go down the line, please.
I, George Schinkin.
I, Joseph Hopper.
I, Chuck Gardner.
I, David Nellens.
I, Jonathan Peterson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the?
That I will support the.
Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the constitution of the state of Indiana.
And then I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge my duties?
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Munster Redevelopment Commission?
And as a member of the Munster Redevelopment Commission.
According to law?
According to law.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, gentlemen. And then the portfolio assignments will be included in the minutes.
That takes us back to the regularly scheduled meeting?
Regularly scheduled meeting.
Alright, so we're going to set up for public comment. We kindly ask that all in the, in person, public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person, or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event, questions are posed to the council. We will note your question in the meeting minutes, and we will refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for the follow-up and response. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or a comment about an item on the agenda that you would like to have more, would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to the town manager Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster dot org. So with that, we'll open up the, open to the public. Do we have a sign-in sheet there?
We do not. We don't normally.
You don't normally, so.
If you have a public comment, state your name and your address.
I'd like to make a public comment, that my name is Tony Rabbits.
It is.
I've been a resident for forty-nine years. I'm very proud of this town. I'd also like to congratulate our new town council, and I'd also like to congratulate the Chief of Police Shekko for thirty-five years of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Dumovic, eighteen thirty-three Tulip Lane. I've got three things. Number one, that jog that they've added on Calumet Avenue, can they strike it a little bit better? At night, it's hard to see the lanes, and especially if it rains. And people keep you real straight instead of making the jog. I'd like to see that strike better. Secondly, the power outage we had a couple of weeks ago, I heard was caused by beavers. Who's responsible for relocating the beavers? And I heard they gnawed on like twenty-three trees out there in the.
Little cow, little cow.
Have they been notified?
They have.
Good, because I was without power for nineteen hours. Wow. And secondly, could you put some, you might wanna put something in the news you can use about carbon monoxide, because I was walking around the neighborhood, and I saw people that had their generators in their garages, their gas generators. And so you might wanna make a note of that for them, so that they know better.
Alright, that's it. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
David Keesling, twelve thirty Camelia Drive. I just wanted to speak for a minute, express my support for both the train and Ridge Road projects. I think that together, it presents a possible one, one-time opportunity for us to really invest in the future of Munster, that we don't want to miss out on. I think that as a community, we should always be looking towards the future to make our decisions on how to grow well, and how to really invest in, in our future strength. We want to make Munster a place to be, not a place to just get through, and related to that, or those special districts that were created in the past two years around the train stations that are meant to do exactly this. The town is changing, the land maybe can be very used in similar ways in the future, and I think that's very important to you, Mike, and should be taken very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, eighteen forty-five, Zella Drive, Munster, also a Munster business owner, two twenty-seven, and one half Ridge Road. I'd like to thank the previous gentleman for his comments on the continuing improvements in the town of Munster. I believe we need to have them. I need, I think we need to open up to more public comment, and I hope the new council supports keeping Munster a safe place. But also, I'd like to bring up a question that I had at one of the previous council meetings on the fact that Munster was considering a food and beverage tax, and I have not received any reply in response to where we're at on that, and why we are, why we are even considering that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and address that food and beverage tax. That's something that we can answer right away. We are not considering that. It is off the table. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Good evening. My name is Posfatt. I live at nineteen oh one Fisher Street. Lived here about twelve years. So love the town of Munster. I grew up in Texas, I've lived in Washington, I've worked in California, New York, all over the US. This is a great place to raise a family, and I hope that the town keeps that forward momentum in keeping this a great town to live by looking at all options in terms of improving the town. This could be the Ridge Road, this could be improvement in our parks district, Calumet Corridor, but then also looking at the people that work for this town. So when the new management, new teams come in, look at who you have on your team, and look at the quality work they're doing. So I'm, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'm a little taken back by that no one seconded the motion to appoint Dustin Anderson. So I've talked to him many times about Munster. What can we do to Munster? When I've gone to other towns like Elmhurst, the days spending with the family, I would text him and other council members, you guys should come check out this town. They have a lot similarities, a little bit bigger, but some of the things they have really match up in terms of aspirational goals for Munster. Dustin has always been open to new ideas. He's collaborative. He doesn't care what aisle you are on in terms of politics. He wants what's best for this town, right, and the families. So I think the town council, please, you know, think about this. Don't make any quick decisions, but I'm just, you know, throwing this out here that Dustin Anderson is a great town manager. I've had other friends talk to me about how they've called and talked to him about different things. He doesn't brush them off. He talks to them about it, you know, and if he doesn't have the information, he's gonna look it up. So please, just make the right decision and reappoint Dustin Anderson as the town manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
My name is. My name is Steve Tulwiski, eighty-eight oh eight North Cut Avenue. Congratulations to the town council. First meeting could be an interesting experience. Just wanna make a plea for communication and collaboration and transparency. I know we always try to get the agenda meetings, the agendas out before the weekends, so we've got time for a few of those. Just listening to the discussion tonight, it seemed like there have been appointments to boards and commissions that weren't fully discussed maybe across all council members. You don't need to rush things like that, but it gives confidence to residents in town when they see that you're talking through things, you're working through things, you're explaining your stance and your position on things. I see that there's outside council has prepared a memo to remove the nominating committee this evening. You haven't voted on that yet, or discussed it.
this evening. You haven't voted on that yet or discussed it. Hope to hear some rationale of why that is. The, the direction for the council. So that I'm just making a plea for transparency and trying to keep up communication and collaboration amongst all members of the council while bringing confidence to us as residents.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Tovin.
Excuse me. Mr. Mr. Anderson, could we move the podium? My turn. Sorry, the TV.
Congratulations, Kathy. You get to speak. Right there.
I taught history today, so give me an hour fifteen. Um, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, your address, please. Your address.
What?
Your address.
Oh, eleven twenty three Elliott Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so first of all, I'd like to, um, there might be a recap in the work study session today. There's a lot of us at work, so, um, we had to miss that meeting, so I don't know if the council addresses that. Um, I'd also like to, um, recognize the, the positive comments about Dustin Anderson. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, positive changes taking place in Munster. It's a great town. Uh, if you're talking about how long we lived here, I moved here in nineteen sixty. Um, and I don't remember that day, but I've been here a long time and I've seen the town change a lot. So I welcome change and I welcome transparency and collaboration. Uh, I think the positive things that are happening in the town, um, are to large degree due to the work of Dustin Anderson, who's very qualified for his job. Um, I just wanted to point out that I, I came here to, uh, say I'm seriously concerned about ordinance nineteen thirty one, which is under new business abolishing the, um, nominating committee, but it looks like, um, processes are already changing. Policies, processes, um, because of these appointments have already been made and uh, you haven't even voted on abolishing the nominating committee was a problem, which is a problem in itself. Um, so we want more transparency. We want, um, to see more input from the community, more community building, more respect from the citizens of Munster. Um, we have a very well-educated population, highly intelligent, a good deal of expertise among people who could, um, bring that to various boards and commissions and committees. And so we want to see people have more opportunities, not fewer opportunities. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there, there was a packet on the side table with that. Oh, they're all gone. Sorry. I already read the, no, no, of regarding the, um, meeting, the work study. It was earlier today, but. Yes, we'll get it posted.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and present their thoughts to the council?
Hey, um, I'm Rachel Brannigan, eighty two forty nine North Cut in Munster. Um, I am a member of the commission and I have also been reappointed, so thank you for that. Um, I, my speech looks a lot different now, um, because I'm coming to tell you all about myself. Um, just know that you are in good hands. I am an architect. I've been an architect since the year two thousand when I graduated from Ball State University. Um, so regardless of that, I'm here to defend Dustin Anderson as our town manager. I would hope that, um, similar to what Posfattamy has said, um, Dustin has done great work for our town and, um, I would like to see him reappointed as our town manager. He cares about our town. His family is in this town. Um, his children are my children's age. We, um, I don't know. I know many people, um, I don't know as many people as passionate about our town as Dustin, so that is my due sense for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There anyone else who'd like to come forward and make a public comment? Asking one more time, is there anyone else who would like to come forward? In the open to the public session? And make a comment? Seeing none, we'll close the open to the public session. That takes us up to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda, concerns?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. I'll second it.
Do you have a motion? We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Miss, would you take a vote? Start with a vote?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Okay, that takes us up to old business. And this, we have ordinance nineteen twenty eight, second reading on group transfers. That sounds like a clerk treasures department.
It is a clerk treasures department. Um, this is something that, uh, it, we set a motion in December and if there was a necessity to move to, uh, have to have to move funds, this allowed us that, uh, opportunity. And I'm pleased to report that there is, uh, wasn't necessary to do a, for instance. Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking of temporary loans and I'm, I misspoke. We do have, I apologize. We do have some temporary tran, or we do have some group transfers. And what you're doing is you're just moving from one line item to another within a fund. My apologies for that.
So that's a balancing of.
Absolutely, yes.
Within that fund.
Yep, with nothing's moving from one fund to another. It's all moving within the bond.
May we have a motion?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt the introduced ordinance nineteen twenty eight on second reading as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Again, my apologies. I was thinking temporary loans and I was a line ahead of us.
Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, Ms. Miss, would you call the votes?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to new business. Item A is the HVAC maintenance agreement. Dustin, do you want to take us through that?
This is a maintenance agreement to maintain, uh, the mechanical systems here at the town hall and municipal complex. We went out to bid and we're recommending the low bid for council's consideration this evening.
Was already approved or awarded to blood mechanical. This is the presentation of the contract, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to take a motion on?
We need to authorize the signing of the contract. And did Mr. Westling, this is the contract, he reviewed it? So, okay.
Mr. President, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the agreement from blood, blood mechanical for a period of three years at a cost of fourteen thousand two hundred forty one dollars for two thousand twenty four, fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars for two thousand twenty five and fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety eight dollars for two thousand twenty six for a total cost of forty three thousand nine oh seven to provide HVAC preventive maintenance services.
Second. All right, um.
I have motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. I believe at this point, um, I'll bring up that we are looking to have the council president sign such contracts. We need to amend the motion?
I just want to see how it's worded and then.
The, the council president always has the authority to sign behind the town, especially after a motion and a fair enough vote. So your, your motion is fine as it.
Okay.
And I have, it's tagged in here to the council president, so I don't think there needs to be a change to the motion.
Nope, that sounds. All right, so we'll call for the votes?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item B. And this is a paving and water improvement change order number one, design change. And this, uh, we'll go to S E H. We have a motion. This reason.
This is to extend the, uh, multi-use path on the north side of Treadway on the east side of Calumet to the Calumet curb line in anticipation of that path continuing on the west side of Calumet on the, what will be the north side of Treadway Drive as it will be constructed by, uh, the Community Foundation of Northern Indiana. Uh, that will be complete along with the installation of the traffic signal, which will allow east-west connectivity between community estates in Centennial Park and Cobblestones Park. Uh, this small section was out of scope originally. Uh, there was an opportunity to do this now, uh, as contractors have mobilized. And it's our suggestion that it be done now as a cost savings measure.
Any further questions? Motion?
Then I'm going to make the motion to, uh, pay the, uh, price for fifty five hundred dollars at S E H.
We have a second.
A second.
Mr. Hopper has a second. Any further discussion?
Is this? Is this then needs to be signed by the council president for this fifty five hundred dollars?
I have missed each muscle assignment.
Well, we, we specifically, the recommendation from the staff was authorizing the town manager to engage S E H. So I'm just clarifying who, who's going to be able to sign this contract. Because you just said, we're going to approve the contract or that's the motion. And who, who will sign this contract?
So, so the motion actually was to just pay, and I was going to actually point out that you specifically need the motion, Mr. Shinkin, to include, uh, approval of the contract.
Okay.
And if you're, and I take it your motion meant to do that, right? And then it's a second meant to second authorizing the contract. And if that's the case, the town council president can again sign the contract. As long as that's everybody's understanding and the minutes reflect that, then we're clear.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We need to have a vote.
We're ready for a vote. Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen thirty one abolishing the nominating committee.
This is the motion to abolish the nominating committee, the president and, uh, for the town council to be directly responsible for the appointments to the nominating committee. Uh, one of the things that we put forward and we were campaigning is a more transparent and direct way of appointing people to boards and commissions. And I think the most transparent way to do this is to have the town council as the parties that are directly responsible. Residents can reach out to members of the council directly. In fact, I had a conversation with residents just today. And I welcome those conversations in my college world. So we'll assemble this in order to bring this authority back to the town council. Again, transparent, if we determine at a later point in time, it makes sense to have another entity of this nature created. And I hope this will be something that we bring back forward. But immediately speaking, uh, this is a motion to bring that authority and power back to the council and make, uh, the power something that residents can directly see and that they can interact with members of the council, uh, to express their things.
Also, we'll still be taking applications through the clerk treasurer's office electronically or in person. And as, uh, in the past, to be perfectly transparent, the nominating committee review applications submitted those to the council. The council at its discretion may accept or, uh, determine other candidates to bring in to place them on a boarder commission. So it is, it is a fluid action and, uh, I guess maybe that'll, that'll be enough. Well, Ms., uh, Ms. will be always present to take the applications. Councillors are also available to answer questions. So should a resident have a question about the boarder commission or what they do? And I would certainly encourage residents to put in their applications and also come and attend any of the meetings to see how they work in the real life. We pretty much have meetings every month on the different boards and commissions. And it would be good for the residents to see how that operates. Any, I guess we're in discussion, um.
With the resident motion.
Their end of the motion is right. So we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
We have a second.
Be, before, Mr. President, before there's a second, so because this is first reading and I took your motion, you want to do this tonight as opposed to what's on the screen. You can do that, but it's got to be in a two-step process. So the first one would be to suspend the rules and consider for adoption on first read. That would be your motion. And then that needs just for everybody's identification. I know this is the first time we've had this issue come up, but under the statute, it takes unanimous consent to consider it for adoption on the first read. And then a two-thirds majority, because you are a five, it takes four out of five to actually adopt on first read. So if.
So.
So the first motion then would be to consider, to suspend the rules and consider for adoption on first read. Ordinance nineteen thirty one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? On this, uh, motion for, uh, nineteen thirty one, do we have a second? For the motion that we have on the table?
I think we need to, uh, really talk about this.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table this matter until the next council meeting.
Do we have a motion to table? Do we have a second on that?
I'll second, yeah.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. I, I guess my question is, is Jake German, who's not employed by the town or under contract with the town, how is he involved in this writing of this ordinance, Mr. Resident? Or Counselor, uh, Counselor Peterson?
Mr. German is an attorney who belongs to Thornburg, which provides the services of town of Munster.
Are they, who gave Mr. German the authority or the direction to write this memo? And this ordinance? It was at a, is that a, was that the wish of the council? Because typically, we, we have Barnes and Thornburg on retainer for lobbying, but this isn't a lobbying request. So this is a little bit outside of what typically Barnes and Thornburg would do for the town. And again, Barnes and Thornburg is a very good agency and, and actually, Mr. German's a very good attorney. But I just, it's surprising that we, uh, we authorize or we give direction to an attorney that is not, doesn't do this type of work and writing this type of ordinance is typically, could be done by even our clerk's office or a town manager's office. And I just, there's an additional cost that's going to be taken on this for this attorney to write this ordinance. And I just, usually if we have an additional cost, um, the council would approve giving direction to an attorney to do that. I just wondered where that came from.
Mr. German's a fine attorney. He works for the town.
Doesn't work for the town in this type of this, this type of, uh, area, though. He's a, he's a lobbyist down in Indianapolis.
He's a fine attorney. He works for the town. He's a fine attorney, he works for the town, and he prepared this on behalf, on our behalf.
And who's, who, who's our behalf? Who, when was that decision to be made of our, our behalf?
He was requested to prepare this, there was conversation with him, I've spoken with him and others, others, I believe have spoken with him. But he was requested to prepare this and put this forward.
By you individually or by? Or other councillors?
I requested him to do it.
Without full approval of the rest of the council?
Ms. Gardner, I don't know what you're getting at here. He's an attorney who works for the town, and I requested.
I'm gonna ask, we're gonna put this to the table and we're gonna have further discussion on it. Any other discussion? Wendy, would you call the vote, please?
We'll vote on tabling this to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. All right, uh, any reports to bring up tonight?
Well, yeah.
And, uh, portfolio reports, we just made those assignments. Announcements, all town council meetings will be, will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. On January fifteenth, at one PM, a special town council meeting and a special redevelopment commission meeting will take place. With that, I mean.
I'm just gonna add the bed meeting was properly announced and the primary purpose of that meeting is to pay bills. The meeting was moved up to accommodate, um, the opportunity for the newly elected officials to attend the conference in, in meetings, so. So I would clarify that.
All right, I'm.
Change.
Motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Dan?
Sure.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that completes our first meeting. We'll, uh, go into the redevelopment commission. Uh, Wendy, no, we're all set on that.
We're all sworn in. Oh, I get to start meeting. Oh, very, so we get to, uh, we need to get a president and whatnot. So I will call the redevelopment commission meeting to order at seven fifty-two PM. I will take roll call. Commissioner Schinkin?
Here.
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Nellens?
Here.
And we have our school board liaison, Mr. John Castro. As always, a pleasure to see you here.
Pleasure to see you all. I am present. Quick note, uh, as this meeting is being moved to the acronym, the next one, I will be unable to attend. We'll follow up.
Thank you. Again, it's, it's really, this, it was announced to pay bills and for any business that may come before the council. So there may be one or two things in the, I think there's a water leak adjustment in the town council meeting, so the just, there's very routine businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Miss Miss, I would make a recommendate, I make a motion to, uh, nominate Dave Nellens for president of the redevelopment commission. I'll second that.
Mr. Nellens, Commissioner Nellens, do you accept the nomination for president of the redevelopment commission?
Yes, I do.
Very good. And then we're ready to take any discussion. We can take a vote on that. Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Our next would be, um, the recommendation for a, um.
I'll make a motion for George Schinkin to be vice president of the redevelopment commission.
Second.
Commissioners, thank you. Um, you're talking faster than I can write, uh, Mr. Schinkin. Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. A vote, Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Can be Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Very good. I am relinquishing the gavel once again. The next order is to appoint, uh, or nominate a secretary and separately an executive se- secretary.
Secretary on the redevelopment commission is to sign paperwork?
Yes.
Yes.
As needed.
As needed.
Generally is the president, but, um, but occasionally the secretary is called into action.
I make a motion to nominate Jonathan Peterson, the secretary of the redevelopment commission.
We, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Peterson, we accept them?
I'll accept them.
Thank you. Very good. Any other discussion? Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
The executive secretary?
I make a motion to point Wendy Miss as the executive session, uh, secretary of the redevelopment commission. I'll second that.
I accept. I don't know that I have, I could state mine. I don't see that in the choice.
Yeah, so.
All right, Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Let's see here.
Public comments?
Well, we have an attorney.
Oh, sorry, I skipped on. My apologies.
I make a motion to, um, appoint, uh, attorney Dave Wesson as the attorney to the redevelopment commission.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Ready for a vote, Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes. That takes us to, uh, public comment. We'll have the same verbiage as we do in the main meetings. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment under public comment for the redevelopment? Is there anyone like to come forward and make a public comment here for the redevelopment commission? Seeing no one, we'll close the open to the public session. That takes us to the consent agenda. Need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda for the redevelopment commission as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
And no discussion, we're ready for the vote. Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes. There's, uh, no old business, no new business. Any reports? Any announcements? That takes us, uh, to adjournments. I'll make a motion to adjourn redevelopment.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's it.